Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the county municipal authority. It is May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Roll call, please.
Colar.
Here.
Gilbert, Franklin, Marshall.
Here.
Ahern.
Here.
Sebo. Morall.
Here.
Stroller.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. I do declare a quorum. In case not by our financial officer, Mr. Meacham, Russ.
That's right. Father, we come before you this night just thankful to be able to call you God and call you Father. And, Lord, as we meet together at this council meeting tonight, we thank you for this government that you have given us, for this democracy, this freedom that we have, not only to conduct our business, but to also worship you in all that we do. And, Lord, this evening, as we meet together, we ask that you bless this board as they make decisions for our community, that those decisions that they make will be filled with wisdom, that they will be guided by you, and that they will be for the betterment of all of us and all of your children. And, Lord, we thank you for all the gifts that you've given us, and most of all, we thank you for your son. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Russ. First item we have on our authority meeting agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, received and approved, the minutes of regular PMA meeting of May one, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Morall.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled concerning the PMA this evening. Comments concerning the PMA. Seeing none. Out of five proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body, staff, council. Seeing none. Any new business that comes forward to the PMA this evening?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Second roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Morall.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. I call to order the regular meeting, city council, city period. It is May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Roll call, please.
Colar.
Here.
Gilbert, Franklin, Marshall.
Here.
Ahern.
Here.
Sebo. Morall.
Here.
Stroller.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item one, the consent agenda. You see items A through L. Do I have a motion as presented, or do you need one or two removed for discussion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Morall.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Thank you. Comments from those assembled concerning the council meeting this evening and its agenda? Seeing none. Proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries by the governing body, council, staff. Item six, city manager's report, monthly update.
Okay. We met this afternoon at the water treatment plant and observed the new sludge box. Waste Water Treatment Plant. Okay. And I thought, surely I was there. See what she's cracking me about. And it is quite impressive. So that is up and running, and everything has been signed off, and is hopefully going to work really well. I sent a check today, five hundred dollars, to DEQ. It's our fine for not having that all in operation a year or so ago. And they've given us till the end of this year to get the lagoon cleaned up. That was a result of wet weather two years ago that got us in this situation. So the fix is in place. Now we just have to get the lagoon cleaned out. And Blaine is writing a request for proposal, not only to clean that lagoon, but to clean one at the water treatment plant.
That's correct.
Okay. And we'll see what we get on that. And we have not begun the prototype filtration for the water treatment plant sludge, but Blaine has requested some sample material. And when that arrives, we will set up a prototyping deal to see how well that works. But it'll work pretty much like the one at the surgery of the plant. I'm thinking we can implement it for considerably less money. So we're gonna check into that and see if we can do that. I mentioned before that the shavs and bearings in the water treatment plant had become, had been a problem. And we're still waiting on one of those shavs to be machined at Larry's Machine Shop. And if that all works out, which looks like it should, then instead of spending about seven thousand dollars for shavs, three of them per pit, it looks like we do it for about fifteen hundred dollars per shaft. So that's, has promises of saving us some money there. And the DEQ representative has been so impressed with our water treatment plant that they have asked to conduct a training class for other DEQ inspectors at our facility. I'm hoping that they're using it as a good example.
I was wondering. It could go either way.
Yeah, it could go either way. Don't do it this way.
So did you say they find us at one facility? They're gonna do a demonstration at the other facilities?
Yeah, it's so good.
That's pretty handy.
Yeah. So I'm hoping that they're using us as a good example. That's what they claim. But they've been working with folks out there getting that put together. And we have scheduled interviews for the baseball complex manager for tomorrow. So we'll be interviewing tomorrow.
Do you have quite a few applicants?
We have three. We might-
We have, we set up three interviews. We had about six applicants.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I've mentioned before that we were working on the rules for Grayseal Cemetery. And that was just a casualty of time for this particular meeting. We'll have that ready for the next meeting for you to act on some changes within our city code that we can put in this little booklet. They will have that booklet available at the cemetery and at City Hall to hand out to people concerning how things are conducted according to our city code. It's just unhandy to find it in a book that's that thick. So condensed pull excerpts, putting it in a little pamphlet. And Tyson has put together a nice little cover for it and a handy little booklet to hand out. And we had the final inspection and sign off for the airport taxiway last Thursday. And Evans and Associates did a very good job out there. They re, what's that grass called? Sod. They put sod along the edges and it looks very good. You'll be seeing another proposal come shortly on doing another piece of the taxiway. They call it something else. It goes from the taxiway over to the runway. It's a connecting piece. So that'll be coming here pretty soon. And the septic system, as you're probably aware, at the terminal at the airport, that had quit working and was overflowing. And we got bids, our in concrete, got the bid on that, and they have completed the job. They did run into some problems, but they worked with us on that and did a very good job in getting that all working. So that's done. We're just waiting for grass to grow back over. They say the grass is greener over the septic tank, but I'm not sure. I think it's really the lateral lines. We had four very good responses from the feasibility study of the railroad overpass. We met with one group and have decided to talk to another group. We'll be meeting with them Thursday, I believe it is. And hopefully we can get something rolling on the feasibility study. A small group of us met with Homeland representative at City Hall about a week ago and expressed concerns about the grocery store and its age and this and that. And he was going to go back and talk to one of his higher-ups and arrange to come back and address, be prepared to address those concerns with us. So we're waiting for that meeting to be set up by them to see what their plans are. Hopefully they can spruce it up. And I've met with two representatives, or representatives from two firms, about remote meter reading. And we'll be putting together a proposal on that. I don't know how much it would cost. I know that there's a lot of people around this table interested, a lot of people at City Hall interested in having remote meter reading. And so we have a meter reader bitten by a dog the other day and had to go get stitches. It's not pleasant thing. And it just kind of adds a little fire to the deal to get this done if we can do it. I know Russ will be pulling back on the reins, but we'll want to at least look at it to see, see what it would cost. He does a good job. And-
Tighten our belt.
Speaking of tightening our belt.
Yes.
The drainage pipe behind the hospital has been becoming more and more of an issue and has been caving in, creating sinkholes. And I had looked at it four years ago and determined that it's the joints, not so much the pipes, but the joints where the pipes are joined together. Sam and I and some of his people have gone and looked at it also and agreed to dig down around each joint, pour some concrete around it, and see if we can seal those up. They've done one of those to see how well that process worked. And so far, we think that's going to be a good fix. Now, it is corrugated steel pipe, so it's not gonna last forever. And yes, the bottom of it is rusty in some places, but we think we can prolong the agony for several years by doing this.
For another council?
For another council, yeah.
Find money for a long fight.
Is that like three years to another council or four years to another council?
Just two, Bill.
Two, yeah.
For you four, but-
Really, I think it should go several years because the pipes are in decent shape. But the joints are loose and the water swirls out of the cracks and erodes the dirt and washes it on down the pipe, and then the dirt caves in and you about lose a lawnmower or a kid in there. So I really think we can fix it up. And their preliminary deal, this first one, costs about eight hundred dollars to do it. That's mostly concrete poured in, but eight yards of concrete in that hole. So they're gonna look at ways of minimizing the hole size because we don't need that. You need it for people to get down in there and hand dig underneath. So anyway, that looks promising. I think the estimate on a flume, an open flume, was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And it'd be even more than that to put a pipe in, a box. So we really think that this is the preferred method. It'd be easier to maintain it if it works. I think it will work.
Do you know how long those joints are?
I think they're forty feet. And just so that maybe the next person that takes the city manager's seat won't be so overwhelmed when they come in, I mean, trying to sort, catalog, and put things in order and write explanations of jobs or projects that are ongoing. So we've been doing some house cleaning and all that, so it's, hopefully it'll be better next time. Any questions?
Have you checked out the dipping in the fifteenth street?
Yes, we have.
Bridge.
Brenda pointed that out to me. I thought it was wonderful and had been over it. And Brenda called me and said, there's a problem out here. So I went out and looked at it, and that was right after the rain. And as soon as we got that rain on it, we had several inches of water standing against the western bank of that street. Saturated the fill. The fill, as far as anybody can tell, was compacted to specification. And we got the reports on the specs, on the compaction testing and all that. Sam and I met over a week ago with the representative from the construction crew that did that. And he agreed, yeah, something's going on. Need to fix it. He called me today and said that they will go in with what he called a hand milling machine, a small milling machine, and mill out the sunken areas down a few inches to get a nice clean cut on each side of the milling. And then they will tack, coat that, and then put in asphalt, roll it down. And he thinks that they can bring that back like it should be. But he did ask that we wait about another ninety days and let it do any further settling that's gonna do it. Shouldn't have done that, but he did it. So that's where we're at. So we've got an inverted speed bump out there temporarily. But hopefully in a while we'll get it fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions, comments? Thank you. Item seven, chief financial officer's report. Mr. Meacham.
Just have in your packet tonight a couple of things. We'll give you financials that are there. I'll probably cover those also tonight. Getting the first draft of next year's budget. And I will do a couple highlights on that, so forgive me for a few extra minutes here. But I'll try to make as quick as I can. All in all, you guys see our overall cash positions and see our decreasing cash just this month. So you guys know we're all related, capital project dollars from the operating side. We're still looking fairly decent compared to where we expected to be. Big picture dollars, our sales tax is down for the month. You know, we would expect to be about eighty-three percent. So we are under that sales tax projection. And looking forward at next month, because we just got amazed two days ago and pulled out what our sales tax collection is going to be, we're gonna be down about fourteen percent over the prior year for May. So we always budget ten percent off, so we've got another four percent here in a shortfall cutting on the sales tax. Which, going into budget projections, those kind of things, makes my job a little tighter and a little tougher. So we're gonna talk about that in a second. On a good note, related to revenues, hotel motel taxes were back up, almost double what we had collected in the prior month. Still not over that eighteen thousand dollar key number that I have, but are back up significantly more than what they had been. So we're gonna hope that that was a two-month anomaly and not a two-month cycle that's coming out. So we will, we'll continue to watch that. As far as expenditures goes within the department, guys, I mean, our department heads have been doing a great job and continuing to do a great job. As you look down through there, we're gonna come in underestimated numbers in every department operationally that's out there. Yes, the capital improvements related to the streets and those things are gonna exceed our dollars, but those are out of bond funds. So we already knew that we did it whenever we committed, and we knew that we were going to be headed into negative cash flow as far as that goes. Related to operating revenues and operations over the PMA, you know, everything is, again, running on track. We will get to see a little bit more revenues in our water and our electric. So those margins will increase a little bit more. We're already over what we expected. So that's gonna be good news, that we'll have a little more net income at the end of the year than what we expected. But I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna be just all hunky-dory. There's still gonna be some tight numbers in there. And long-term planning, you know, as we talked about this, going into the budget, you know, I mean, we still need to look long-term at those big picture things and the big picture items that we have. Any questions related to financials? You guys have, you all read numbers for all of them, and you all, so I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on that. I do wanna spend a couple of minutes on the budget that you have in front of you. I will tell you, I'll give you the shock factor first. Got off the phone with the health insurance today. They will be up here next week to talk about it. But our increase is right at twenty-three percent on the health insurance. So I told you last month I've had a twenty-five and a twenty-four. You guys made the twenty-three, a seventeen, a couple of tens, and then everybody's under that after that. But unfortunately, due to claims and due to some things outside of our control, we are going to be in the top group. In a dollar number, what does that twenty-three percent represent? About two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars more out of city pockets next year than what we had this year. Now, that being said, we're gonna have to look at plan changes, and we're gonna have to look at something different to make that happen. This budget that you have in front of you does not have the numbers in because I literally did not have them. And honestly, honestly, I can't tell you we can even afford it if those numbers were right. We're going to have to make some changes. Just the employee portion, even if we just did a hundred percent of the employee portion of that, it's a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars next year. So that, again, is, it's twice what we normally budget in any year for that increase. And you do the two-thirty, and we're just, we're jumping up, you know, four times, four and a half times what we do budget. So those are significant dollars, and those pieces do come out and do fall out, big picture, and really affect what we're doing. On the operations for the city, guys, you know, we've kind of put this budget together like we always do whenever we pull, whenever we pull that. The operational dollars, I kind of give you a pretty good guesstimate at where those are gonna run just based on trends and based on history of what we know. It's the capital projects that are really our items that we need you all fussing on. Or maybe you guys say do them, maybe you say don't do them. And depending on where we go there and how we go, you know, we can talk about that. You know, I mean, yes, we could cut out all of the general fund capital projects and be able to fund the health insurance increase. But is that really the responsible thing to do? And unfortunately, I don't get to make that decision. I leave that to you guys and for the policy making and the decision side of where we go on this. In the budget, just so you kind of know, as always, we budget ninety percent of our reacquire revenue, so our sales tax and those kind of things. This year, it was good that we budgeted it at ninety percent because that's about what I'm projecting now. I'm saying we're gonna come in at about ninety-one percent right now, projecting the year-end sales tax numbers for the year. So, you know, we didn't get, this will be one of those years that we budgeted sales tax lower, and it's barely getting clear. Usually I'm able to tell you we budgeted it at ninety percent, and man, look, it kicked in and we had an extra hundred thousand dollars, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on what that number is. We budgeted it ninety percent again this year. So that's seventy-five thousand dollars of revenues that we are not budgeting against. I want to prepare that if we have another downturn again next year, that we're already ahead of the game cash flow-wise and where we would expect to be. Included in this is another, is a two-point-two percent utility rate increase. In normal dollar, operating household dollars, that's really about three dollars and fifty cents on your additional electric bill this month. So if you think about that, at three dollars and fifty cents, that's really effectively the change that you have, I mean, from one month to the next. You're not gonna see that three dollars and fifty cents difference individually per household. But that number's in there. Again, that's up to you all for debate and discussion. But I needed that number to get this budget where it is. If we take that out, or we take that down in some percentage, we would take down then our spending on the other side to make that work. The two and a half percent increase is pretty much the equivalent of CPI that's out there for the Southwest region for the last year. So that's really keeping us in pace with CPI and with increased operating expenses that are there. And then you have in detail, you know, the capital outlay dollars and what we're proposing as far as what was requested versus what is actually in the budget. And we will go through those in more detail whenever we do budget sessions. But I want you guys to have that. You can kind of see them in summary there. If you look at the first page of the staple document, I'm just gonna hit real quickly. I mentioned to you that we got this down pretty much to a balanced budget at this point. That balanced budget, if you'll look in the net change call for the general fund, we're gonna increase twenty-eight hundred dollars next year. Mind you, that's at ninety percent revenue, so if we collect all of our revenues, we'll increase it about seventy-seven thousand dollars. But that's, that's a good number, at least starting point at this for us, I think. Likewise, the utility fund is at fourteen hundred dollars. So the airport fund is, of course, the loss, which we usually budget the loss in there. We make, what happens is we get a big lease bonus every three to five years, and that funds airport operations for the next five years, and we eat into that each year. Then we come back with another airport funding and for more in-gas revenues, and then we take it down again. So that's just kind of the rollover. I don't expect anything different. And then each of our special revenue funds, all of those decreases, guys, each of these should be zero at the end of the day. So the dollars that are sitting in there, we're just allocating out and spending them according to the purpose that they were set aside. So I don't really worry about that part. The two funds that I'm most worried about, and Brian and I, I promise we'll sit down and go over this in a whole lot more detail so you're up to speed. But the general fund and the utility fund are the two that are really our operating entities, the two pieces that we have. Based on what we get back on health insurance and based on those decisions that we bring back and discuss, we're going to have to build something into this budget to help cover that. We did a small, just two percent of personal services right now in there. So that dollar will move around a little bit. But significantly, as far as overall dollars to the budget, it's thirty thousand bucks. It's not, it's not a hundred and thirty that I have over here coming from health insurance today. So we're going to have to do something related to that. What that is, we will explore some options next week as soon as Dixie gets that set up with them. And whenever we have that, we'll be ready maybe to further discuss some better options. I just, I can't advise us to take a twenty-three percent increase in health insurance. That just, that's gonna be too hard to fund, and then fund that year over year. So we will look at the options and see what's there. We're kind of at that point for, I need a little input on you all, from you all, as far as what you want to do related to the meetings on this budget and the budget hearings. Do we want to do an afternoon session with everybody together? Do we want to? How do we want to do this? We've done it multiple ways in the past. I'm open to your all's suggestions. I know there's a couple that I'll meet with and get you guys up to speed if we do one big session, just so you guys kind of know where we are. But from everybody else's standpoint, what do you prefer, what works best for you, and how do you want to look at it?
I like, I like them all. I'm ready to do the big sessions. Just get it over with.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like the big session also.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to do that, like, early before? Take like five to six fifteen? I mean, I think in an hour we can run through this. Are we gonna do it as part of the meeting? Do we want a whole special meeting? If we're not careful, we're gonna have several special meetings in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, 'cause we've already got the interviews we're gonna do, so. Is there a way we can just, is there a way we can do it as part of the next meeting? Just we start early?
I think that's what he's saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Start early. Yeah, we start at like five. I mean, I just hate to, if we start at five, that only gives you guys an hour and fifteen minutes to brag about things. And then we have to shut it off and start the real meeting, so. Oh, sorry. Bryce, you were supposed to tell me not to say that part of that.
That might be a good thing for you.
That's actually why I was going for it. I like having an end time in budget sessions, not a-
So if we did it that way, there'd be the June fifth meeting then?
Yeah, on June fifth.
Yeah.
It has to be approved by the thirtieth, right? It has to be, we have to hold a public hearing on, so we could do that meeting, hold a public hearing on the fifth meeting. We have to adopt it by the twenty-third. So we'll adopt it then at our meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we have scheduled, so. Guys, operationally, as I tell you every year, we put forth the operational budget that you can adopt, and we're not gonna have any issues with it. It's capital project pieces that I think are really where, where we have to make some hard decisions as to what we really want to do and where we're gonna go on this. What we can afford to do is really the kicker in that. So if we wanna plan on the fifth before, maybe start at five and maybe do a special meeting at five, and then we'll be at the meeting at six. Okay?
I will plan on doing-
I will plan on doing that then. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
So, Russ, do you want me to get together and figure out who that?
Yeah, let's, let's figure out a day that works for you. Um, and if we do it with Shelley together, that'd be best, but I'll do it one-on-one i- i- if that's what, what makes it best. It's just, I wanna make sure you guys know what's in here coming into that meeting because the governmental accounting is so much fun anyhow. Um, you'll, you're just gonna love it.
I hear that.
Good stuff, good stuff. Item eight on our agenda is a presentation of Fort Lee Fork from Dan Odegaard, CEO of Perry Municipal Host- Memorial Hospital, sir.
Hello. Well, I just wanted to give you up to, I think they're happy at the hospital, if you have any questions, please jump in and ask those questions. Uh, first of all, we are, um, well into, uh, building the infrastructure to our new electronic health record. And we have to, we plan to have that operational this fall. We're switching to a, a product called Athena Health from, uh, a product that we're currently using called CPSI. We expect, um, this new electronic health record to save us approximately sixty thousand dollars. That's one of the main reasons that we're switching, uh, EHRs. Um, also, um, it will help us to fully integrate the clinic with the hospital and also help us to significantly improve our efficiencies in operations. So, we're excited about that and, uh, again, it's, it's underway. We are in the process of converting our medical clinic to a Medicare-designated rural health clinic status. And we're doing that to improve our Medicare reimbursement. We expect, uh, reimbursements from Medicare to increase approximately two-hundred thousand dollars after this conversion. And, um, the conversion is expected to be completed, uh, within six weeks. So, we're excited about that as well. Again, that will bring in approximately another four to five hundred thousand dollars per year, uh, per our estimate. We are currently, uh, working on a, an application for a program, uh, that's made available by CMS. It's called the Rural Demonstration Project. And what that, what that does is it opens up, uh, cost reimbursement to rural hospitals, uh, and, uh, for their inpatient services. So, it's really specific. And we are, we should have that application completed this week and submitted by the deadline of seventeenth of May. If we're accepted into this program, it's, it's gonna be, uh, very competitive, but if we're accepted in, into this program, uh, it should add another two-hundred thousand dollars to the bottom line annually, so we're excited about that opportunity. Uh, from a patient care, uh, perspective, we continue to work with Integris. And, uh, our current initiatives with them include a new neurosurgery clinic at the hospital, uh, provided by a neurosurgeon out of Edin. That started the first week of May. We also are gonna be adding a new pulmonology clinic at the hospital and that's gonna be starting in June. And we will resume, uh, pain management clinic, uh, this fall when the new doctor arrives. Yep. I forget what their names are, one's Wang and the other one's Jang, I think, something like that. But, uh, one recruited the other one, which is really nice, and so we will continue to have pain management services at the hospital and, uh, available to the public.
You said resume, did that already get started and then it kinda fell off or?
It, it did because the new, the, the doctor who was currently there moved on to, I believe he went to Texas to be with his wife and family. So, it's unfortunate, but, um, we're also working on a strategic marketing plan. We've hired a consultant to help us develop this plan. They will also be helping us implement this plan so we can more successfully tell about the great care that's been provided at Perry Memorial Hospital and community medical clinic. Uh, that plan will be presented to the hospital board at the next board meeting this month. And we hope to implement that, uh, in the next fiscal year, excited about that. I wanna ge- I wanna update you on the services, uh, that are offered at the hospital that are uncompensated, what we call uncompensated care. The services that we, uh, offered year-to-date at the hospital, uh, equal about one million eighty-five thousand nine hundred and three dollars for the first nine months, uh, of our fiscal year. That uncompensated care number is made up of, of bad debt in the amount of nine-hundred thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and charity care in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's uncompensated care to the community of Perry and the surrounding areas. From a financial picture, over the last, uh, well, the first three months of this calendar year, uh, we've experienced an increase in income and cash flow and also an increase in our patient satisfaction scores, which we're totally excited about. So, I'm happy to tell you about that. In the future, what's next for Perry Memorial Hospital? We've had, uh, success in delivering telestroke services and we're exploring ways to leverage this type of technology into the future. So, telehealth services can not only provide access to specialty care physician services, but it can also help the hospital deliver healthcare services more efficiently and also at a higher level of care. So, we're exploring new opportunities through telehealth and we're excited about that. My last comment, I picked up while listening, listening to Russ give his report about the increase in health, health insurance premiums. And, um, I just want to let the city council know that the hospital would be more than happy to talk to you about healthcare services and ways that you can potentially, yeah, enjoy cost savings. And I think that it would be a good idea if we met together and talked about ways that we could help the city, save some money. And, um, that's my report here. Any questions, council? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, just still recording, we need our budget. It has to go in our June thirtieth act, so.
Give me tomorrow.
Yeah, I was just, 'cause I mentioned it to her, it's in the.
Oh, our budget?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so we can get that in.
It's due tomorrow?
Well, we have, it's, no, it's not due tomorrow, it's, June fifteenth has to be.
Okay, well, we're working on it.
Perfect.
It, uh, will be presented to our board in May.
Thank you. Item nine, consider approval ordinance twenty-seventeen dash sixteen, amending chapter eight of the Perry Municipal Code two thousand seventeen by the amendment of section eight dash one oh nine concerning open burning, providing for an amendment to subsection B by the addition of A, subsection three concerning land clearing, burning operations. Providing for an amendment to subsection E by the addition of A, A subsection five pertaining to land clearing, burning operations. Providing for an amendment to subsection F by an addition of A, subsection five, setting the land clearing, burning operation permit fee, providing for savings, separability, repealer, codification, penalty, and declaring an emergency. We asked Bryce to update this for some concerns from citizens and if you read it, uh, we've had amendment. Bryce, would you like to describe the change that she's made?
Yeah, the, uh, copies in front of you and Bill had brought this up and that's the fact that there is no provision that provided a setback from a neighbor's property. So, that has been added as E at the top of the page, a hundred-foot setback from a neighbor's property. And, and this is directed, you know, we've got an issue there on fur. Uh, this is to allow them to take care of this and other folks to take care of, uh, burning when they do land clearing operations, 'cause taking it out any other way would be, uh, uh, very offensive. Uh, we went over, uh, with this fact, it was presented to me by, uh, Wayne, the fire chief, and we went over it in some detail. Uh, we gave you two copies, one was a copy of the current open burning law, which is very, very detailed and gives a series of different, uh, times when you can burn in time, but there was no, uh, there, there was no opportunity to burn except, uh, uh, any kind of massive amount except after an emergency, tragedy, you know, weather event or something. And so, this one is a, a little bit different animal, we thought it was probably appropriate.
Well, and we're wanting to encourage cleanup, renovation, building and all of that. And some of the property where that could occur is heavily tree-covered and this will help the people clean that up at lower expense, wanted to do.
In our, in our packet, there were two ordinances and one was dealt with bonfires and campfires and those sorts of things. And this is large-scale prescribed burn or, um.
Controlled burn.
Controlled burn.
This amends that ordinance.
This amends that completely.
Yes, by giving a whole nother criteria of land clearing, burning.
Well, this, this fits into that one, right?
Yes, and I, I didn't wanna give you a six-page, you know, would this thing sit in, fit into it? So, I just, you know, this is kind of an excerpt from that one, but I wanted to give you from where it came.
I, I read that overall and I went, I don't understand this because it doesn't really tell me what I need to know as far as a landowner or as far as a citizen, as to when I can burn and when I can't burn. Can I burn leaves or can I roast marshmallows in my, my container in my backyard?
Yeah, I can do that.
Et cetera, et cetera, so that's not complete as far as I'm concerned. This covers prescribed burns, but we left all of that other stuff, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
That was passed by the council in, in two thousand, uh, two, two thousand nine.
Yeah.
This one we have in front of us is just if you have five acres or more.
Exactly, yeah. And, and, and my point is, is that I think the other one needs to go, we need to go back and, and visit it.
Okay.
Because there's several things in there that are repeats that I don't understand and they would like to see us take a look at that.
Other than that? I don't have a problem with this one for five acres, but, uh, the overall big, big scene needs some help, in my opinion.
Well, we have Wayne here, he can explain it all today.
Don't burn.
Wayne, what is the policy for open burning in the community?
Uh, you can, you can do it, you know, like the little fire gates are covered, got a chimney on it to keep stuff coming out. Uh, no burning on the ground, you can't put rocks around something, just have them fall straight on the ground. Which no debris, like you can't burn trash, leaves, anything like that. And really, this, this was brought up to me 'cause somebody, uh, hit me up about learning to brush out on fur. And of course, the way ours is set up, we can't do that. And we've had that happen before where they did micro, what the hell out there, they had all their trees. So, we had to have them hauled off and like David said, it's pretty expensive to do that. So, I told him I'd come down and I talked to David and I talked to Bryce, got the coach and steel waters, see what they are and brought it to the evening, that's kinda what we came up with.
There aren't, there aren't a lot of opportunities to burn, we don't, you know, we don't provide a lot.
And it'll probably be rare, there's really not that many places in Perry that can be cleared out and have that much brush.
There's one or two big piles down on the east end of Locust, down in River Trax. He cleared a bunch of land in there, I don't know if he was planning to burn it or not, he inquired about it.
He, he had inquired about it, but the way it was set up, I thought, you know, it's one of them.
And so, he's just stopped doing anything.
Yes.
I see Charles Machine Works has a pile of trees out there, they've just bulldozed, they may wanna do the same thing, I don't know, I haven't heard anything. But, it, it happens and this puts a burden on them to not be able to burn.
Well, I know we still are letting them do it, so, you know, they could probably get another, you know, a little bit of that or so.
Well, I will verify, if you put little rocks up and build you little bonfires at your house, the fire department will come to your house.
Really?
And we'll make a mess of your yard.
They do a fine job.
They do a real fine job.
I keep telling you, we got some great people working for us.
We do have some great people.
But the way I read this too, I mean, the way we got set up, they can't have really big piles after it's gonna burn for two, three weeks. It's pretty much gonna burn up in one day. So, they're gonna have to make smaller piles, they need to be out here like that, some of it's gonna be pushed back.
So, it's pretty close.
Yeah, some is too close.
And under this new proposal, the pile size would be up to your discretion and a lot of other things about it, you would be.
Right, what we'll do is, I'll go out and I'll look and I'll tell them, see where you can burn it. You know, cut this one in half or, you know, or something like that.
Yeah.
But there'd be specifics, and it's already in, in our other orders too, you know, wind's gotta be less than ten miles an hour. And, you know, we gotta have water, somebody watching and all that, so that stuff's already in there. I don't really see that big a problem out, out there, especially right now.
Motion to approve?
Have a motion?
Second. Second.
So, call this.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Motion for emergency?
Second.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item ten, presentation by interim city manager David Payne on construction of certain improvements on the west side of city hall, direct improvements and expenditures not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Mr. Payne?
Okay, I assume that you've all read the, uh, the text and have looked at the floor plan. What I'm proposing, we do, is put some walls in the large media room side on the west side of the building. And, uh, we already have a conference table and chairs there that's been in storage and we can get that back and put in there. Gives a new office for the city manager and city clerk and frees up some space on the east side that would fit into what I'm showing as phase two and then eventual phase three. But, phase three, uh, will be a little more involved. But just to kind of, um, give you an idea, I believe that my estimate on materials, assuming that the work that could be done by city employees would be done by city employees. So, the whole thing, I'm estimating at about fifty thousand dollars in materials, so it's not like a two, three-hundred thousand dollar deal. Going back to what I'm asking for tonight is phase one, but since I put together the estimates and had put in a little bit of fudge factor for two items I didn't yet have quotes on, since that time, I've gotten quotes or estimates, I'll say, on those and they came in lower than I thought. So, that is on heat and air and that worked out very simply. Um, he said for six hundred dollars, I can make the changes we need in that to make it work. And the other thing, I'd thrown in a fudge factor for some electrical work. And Brian looked at it and he wasn't real sure at first, but he's come back with an estimate of about six hundred dollars there. Those, I thought, might be bigger numbers. Um, what I'd like to do, if you would still approve up to the asking price, the ten thousand, I'd like to move partially into phase two and put up a security wall. I've got quotes on the windows that would go in there for about twenty-five hundred dollars. And so, it'd be a little more than that for, to build the wall. But, I think, and I'd have to get some more pricing on that, but I think we might be able to do that security wall as part of this project. as part of this project as well. And we have.
Floor to ceiling wall?
No, it would just be like a six, eight foot, it might go clear the ceiling.
Kind of like.
Yeah, because we're, it's only an eight foot ceiling in there. So yeah, we can go clear the ceiling.
Yeah. We're going to get carpet out too?
Eventually, but that is the biggest chunk of phase one was the flooring. Not proposing carpet, proposing a click together vinyl, what do they call it? Long tiles, planks or whatever it is. And that was over three thousand dollars just for that. But it's something that our people can do. It goes together very well, very easily. And they've used it and I like it. So just back on the security thing, we have had occasions where we've had to call Brian and he sent some people down to escort folks out or go find them and escort them over to his place. So there, there've been issues that are very disturbing when they happen. We'd really like to have a security wall in there.
So, so that being said, are you done? I'm sorry. Now, this phase has changed its tool a bit here, but why wouldn't we try and do phase one? And can we not do ph- or do phase one being the wall and all the security first? As opposed to doing the offices first and the meeting room and then the.
It could be done that way.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm.
The way I said, you have to take out the city manager's office, right?
Eventually, yes. Not, not right away. We can still use it as is without, without doing all of phase two. So we can put the wall up and still have the city manager's office in there as it is today.
My concern is that the meeting room over there, the only way that, there, there's several entrances, but it's through the clerk's office and the city manager's office and the front door.
Just trying to make use of what we've got.
That was another one of mine.
Could there not be a door coming off that front room into there, off the lobby?
That wall is this thick, it could be done.
Is there two walls there?
My second question. You may be leaving in a couple of weeks. And so would this not be a process we'd want to start with a new city manager?
I don't know. It needs to be done either way. I'm not building it for me, so. It's just.
Well, it's just a thought. I mean, I didn't know.
Anytime we have meetings in there, we have visitors, it's really embarrassing.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Bring in that nasty room.
Safety is my number one concern and I would, I'm along with Derek, I would like to see, maybe the order of what we do things changed up a little bit, but I'd like to see a security wall put in there for the employees down there. Because I know we've had incidences.
Well, here's what drove me in, to do it in this sequence, but that could be revisited and maybe changed. I do have a quote that could probably be pared down some on electronics to go in here for security purposes. And I believe it's right at ten thousand or just a little over ten thousand dollars just for that package. So I kind of put that on the back shelf thinking, you know, that's, that's a little bit much. And had my list of needs and picked out the conference room as being kind of a low budget thing that would show, make great improvements. And now I'm thinking we can do that and the front wall for about the same amount of money.
I'd like to see it done that way myself.
Do the security, do phase two first and then phase one?
No, I mean, I don't have a problem with getting the back room fixed up too, but I'd like to see the security wall put up. I don't think we need to wait around on that for something to happen.
I think that that is a very important part. Now, whether we put all the electronics in, I'd like to not discuss.
I'd rather you not.
Everything that we have in, in our mind there, uh, what could be done, but just call it security. And I, I think we can get some of that pulled off also.
From an attorney's standpoint, how do you feel about delaying the security end of.
Oh, I've been encouraging, I, I've been encouraging the city for a number of years to do, to do the security. And I've been encouraging the city for close to a decade for doing the conference room. In fact, when I was city manager for four months, that was part of the budget request, but it was, that piece was cut out.
Russ.
So along with comments you made earlier, Russ, um, because there's more than one item tonight, big picture wise. We've got several dollars here on the agenda. Where's all this money coming from and what's, uh?
Well, this ten thousand dollar appropriation, at, at ten thousand could come out of the existing current year budget. And we wouldn't have to do anything. Another option, if we're going to make it twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, but you know, what that upper limit comes, we always have the capital project funds, um, that million dollars capital project funds that we have set aside that we can use based on seventy-five percent approval of the council and use that then to fund.
So how much of that do we have left?
Seven hundred thousand dollars right now.
Okay. So ten thousand dollars is a piddle amount if you look at the overall and with its value and with the return on investment could be.
But I'm asking big picture across the whole agenda here. Also, not just this one. I want, because we're talking a pretty big purchase with the, the back and some, some other things there. And all, everything we do in this, this year also affects next year.
The, the rest of, the rest of these, the back comes out of, comes out of the sewer department and it was budgeted in there. Um, so, um, I think there's a thousand dollar difference between what final price came and what we did. The, the other, that's the other big piece. The rest of, the audit is, is an annual budget dollar that we spend each year. And I don't think there's another, I think that's the only other big one.
That was my concern too, and if they're budgeted, that makes a difference to me. I didn't realize that, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that, that part has.
Remodel.
On, on this big, the remodel part is, is a part that was not budgeted. And just based on it being over seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, I mean, wanting some blessing on, on how those dollars go out.
Am I correct? Uh, there's a budget item in there for ten thousand dollars to look at properties, what are doing properties?
Right.
That hasn't been used.
That's, that's what I was, remember I said, we've got money in there. That's why I was.
So it's, it's just didn't have this title on, but it's.
Well, how, how's other city halls set up? Uh, I haven't been in the other city halls. I mean, is it customary for the city manager to have a office in the back somewhere, off to the side somewhere? I, I have, I've said in, in my qualifications for a new city manager, I want someone that can greet the public. And if there's a problem, they can come out into the public. And in this situation, it won't happen. I li- I like the city manager's office being in front, but I don't know how it's customary. Uh, I guess some of you other, Russ and Bryce, maybe some other people know.
Total built a new city hall. I guess it's been operational three years now. I went over there and looked at it when they first put together it. They have a secure area where people come in, the door to pay bills and whatever. And you see manager's offices up there with them, but it's behind that secure door.
No, that's why, no, I'm not saying that.
That's why that one's.
Basically, like kind of leave it where it is, but build that wall.
Yeah, I want, I think the city manager should be visible to the public. I've said it for a long time.
Well, what I did for research is, uh, and I, I did not do a lot of traveling around, but had an opportunity to look at Enid's city hall. And I got plans for all three floors of that. And compared space allocation that they have to space allocation where we have the same functions going on. And started mushing that together. And just to answer your question, their city manager is on the sub, uh, upper floor, way back in the corner.
I like, I like the, I told you David talked about this. I, I like your approach to doing something, you know?
And you see where the door is, even though the desk isn't aligned with the door, it's, once you get past the security wall, it's not way back in a corner, so to speak, but I, I understand.
It's quite a ways back there.
It, it's not right up front. It's not way back in the back, but yeah, it's.
But where they are now, it is nice if they can monitor, hear people that come in and things like that. Move them on, on the other side of that firewall, Mike.
And I have had occasions where I hear a commotion going on and I step out the doorway and that tends to settle things down.
That's what I'm saying. If you, if you.
With the wall.
Just the visibility of the city manager.
Yeah.
It can really tame things down, I think.
With, with the wall in there, I would expect that diminishes a great deal. But, uh, but I, I understand your concern and it does work that way.
It's also nice to, you know, to have some private space though, you know, I mean, it's nice to have your own door out and in, which is what this has. It, it's nice to be able to have a meeting with somebody in your room without everyone knowing who you're meeting with and what you're meeting about. The, the city clerk's function is, is, is probably much more tied in with the, uh, than the utility clerks and the folks that come in, you know, I think part of the purpose of yours, it wasn't my idea to put those offices. I just had the idea of the, of the conference room, but, but I actually like that. You know, employee, managers have to meet with employees to, you know, to say good job, to say bad job, to say you're promoted, you're, you're fired and, and right where it is, I mean, literally, you cannot talk, you cannot talk above a whisper, okay, or everybody else.
You're talking about in the conference room? Take out the office behind it, build a conference room there and move that lady, whatever she does, over there.
Yeah, well, whatever, whatever needs to happen, it needs to be, uh, uh, the ability to have, uh, uh, private discussions without everyone knowing what's going on. Because that, that's one of the real issues here. And I suppose the addition of a conference room and another part gives you that because you can always step out and, and come over and do that. So, so that's really your call. But the way it is now with everybody being able to come through, uh, and, you know, they kind of hide their eyes if they think they're not supposed to be, literally, or, or bend down if they think they're not supposed to be a part of it. It's actually quite comical and, and we've needed that for a long time. It, it's also nice with that front door to bring, if, if that's going to be a nice space, it would be great to bring people in from that door, uh, because, you know, the other side is, I mean, it hasn't been upgraded in more than thirty years and it, it's really, really, uh, there, there's nothing good about this, the current space.
And, and another analysis that I did build was early in this, looking at this, I identified the functions that we have going on in city hall and which of those need privacy? Which of those could be in an open space with just dividers? So I did look at it in that regard, separating privacy and non-privacy and who needs access to a conference room. I looked at it first as if we're going to build a whole brand new facility and identify those needs and inter, interactions and all. Then I took that model and tried to apply it to the box we're in. And how can I most closely fit those needs in the space we've got? So it wasn't just haphazard that.
No, I understand that.
Did that, but yeah, it's been considered.
Is it, I look at the, uh, conference room and I look at ten chairs. And there's been some meetings that I've attended where there's been fifteen or twenty people involved, like our Perry Lake project and those sorts of.
And Dixie and I talked about that and if you look at the, the actual space that we use in that room with all the stuff sitting around the perimeter and how this, the dimensions of this compared to that, really haven't shrunk it down very much. But it, it is a concern. It is more confined, uh, but we figured that, yeah, it'd work. Again, trying to work with what we've got.
The far back corner of our southwest corner with the little table and four chairs in the middle? What is the use of that?
That would be code and mapping and planning. And it's a, just an open area that if we go that far, I would see those functions back there. But at this point, I'm not trying to arrange pictures on the wall and assign specific spaces. There are some functions that can happen in open space and those are some that I see happening there. And I apologize for not having labels on the rooms, but, um, I labeled mine so I could answer that question.
Good man.
I think I've got every function that we currently have represented. And in this whole remodel, I've got extra spaces that we don't currently use in case time comes longer. We, and later in the agenda, we'll talk about GIS. And, um, someday that may be an added person. Right now it wouldn't be. But in the overall floor plan, I've added space as if that is going to become a separate function. So just trying to plan ahead for that.
Any direction you want to provide?
Well, we wanted to do this starting now.
Yep. Critter has looked at it. He, I, I did my estimate. He did his estimate separately. We came in within a hundred dollars or so of each other on material cost. And he can work that in whenever he's available.
Personally, I believe personally, I would like to see us go ahead and get a security taken care of and wait until we get a new city manager, as Bill stated, to kind of go forward from there. David, that's, I think that would be appropriate and I think that's, I think we'd be putting the car behind of the horse if we did it any other way. That's just my.
And I think that you, I mean, we could retain your, your advice for the new person. Because I think you've got some great ideas. I really do.
I agree with that also.
Love the ideas for sure.
Something needs to be done because it's, it is embarrassing.
I think that flooring has been on, attempted to be on the budget for as long as I've been on the council. It's terrible.
Over nineteen seventies shake carpet. I'm sorry.
But the.
I know it's back.
But the duct tape is holding up really well.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, cool. Okay. We don't have a safety issue then, right?
No, we take down the seams. And I'm not joking.
I know you're not.
Like to make a motion that we go ahead and get the security, uh, wall in place. And, uh, wait until a later date when we get a, uh, new city manager hired to, uh, go ahead and complete phase one and two as far as office space.
For small fee, do you think we could do the flooring and make the lobby look nice above and beyond that security wall?
Well, I think my estimate on the other side was like thirty-eight hundred dollars, same square footage over here, so.
I'm just talking the little lobby outside the security wall.
Okay, sure. Yeah. And we would.
Make that presentable.
We would need to do that because we'd be messing with the carpet and everything.
And you're going to have to, are you going to have to have a new desk and you're going to build new desk area for the, uh?
Yes, right there behind the wall.
Yes. Because you've got to reconfigure that anyways. Cause you've gotta reconfigure that anyways.
I haven't put figures to that yet, cause I was concentrating on the, I knew what to do on the other side, there's some unknowns on this side. But, uh, we're going to look at some desks and chairs tomorrow, so there may be an opportunity there to pick up some pieces.
David, is that blue line that goes across there that says twenty-three, four, I think it says, behind that wall? Is that about the, even with the front of the city manager's office approximately?
Uh, yes, that would be pretty close.
All right, well, I'll second the motion, the, Mike's motion.
I, I do have one other discussion and I wanna, wanna know if we, um, are you talking at all, any kind of electronic surveillance or security or whatever along with this wall? Or do you feel like you don't need it with, with the wall?
No, I think we need it, I'm just say, stating right now in my motion that the wall could be built and the flooring updated. And then we'll come in at a other, a different phase and do what is being recommended as well.
As far as the security.
Yes, sir.
System.
Flooring in the lobby.
Why would we want to wait, I guess, my question.
Wait for what?
Why would we want to wait for, to, uh, if we got a security wall, why would we want to wait for a later date to put in a secure, electronic security?
Jim, my thinking is, uh, just my opinion and my thinking is, once you decide if you're gonna set those offices up that way or not, it may change the configuration of what the security would be, so.
And I'm only thinking about the lobby area itself and where the, where the girls are working there in, in front of the office. That's all I'm talking about, is just that security within that particular area.
What type of security, well, we don't really wanna get into that, but what are you thinking is, what are you calling security there?
Robot. It's, it's not, it's surveillance basically and that kind of security, so that, uh, for, for starters, you've gotta have some way of recording what happens. If you're going to go on in to court and if our esteemed attorney has to, has to present that for report.
Do you need an electronic system backup with surveillance with whatever else you need?
It's gonna take us a month or so to even get anything started.
You've amended your motion.
So by that time. We have three more meetings, you know?
We can wait.
I mean, I, I don't care what, I, I, I just sense, you know.
To, to, to me, number one priority is security of those people, but.
Exactly.
That's right. Which includes electronic.
We don't know how much electronic is.
Right.
I have one, one quote for just over ten thousand.
Is that the entire facility or is just the front?
Secure the front.
And you may wanna rescind.
That's, that's above and beyond the ten thousand for the, so now we're twenty thousand.
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave my motion the way it was.
I could, I could pick, I, I'd pick the lesser of the three to bring to you first.
But your motion still has the ten thousand dollar cap on, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's just to do the wall and the, and the flooring out in front and the lobby area.
Make the lobby more.
That might go. We have a second motion, any further discussion? You do not wish to amend your motion?
No, sir.
Rook call Dixie.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Pager.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number eleven, item eleven, consider approval of proposal Monsoon Consultants to prepare technical specifications and bidding documents together with a permit for removal of solid, sludge solids that have accumulated in existing lagoon ponds. Does that say lagoon ponds? Located at the wastewater treatment plant and the water production plant in amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. And retroactively approve the consent order. If you read, uh, down through here, I, I learned a new term after I went to the bank and started reading through the document, the F E B term, not February, that's Flow Equalization Basin. So, uh, that's the violation we had, we violated our basin and we really didn't have any choice there. But, uh, this, uh, the consent order, we are, we're, uh, act, we're operating on it right now, this would get that, uh, we need that approved and it will then get us in compliance because we've got the sludge management thing going on out in the plant and we are, uh, trying to, to contract with and find a contractor to take care of the water treatment plant and its sludge problem. Which really is, is a, um, a factor that is not causing anybody any heartache, but the D E Q does just, it's just sitting there and we need, we need to do something with it. We recycle the clear water on top and disposal of the sludge in an improved manner or keep paying fines, so.
Now, when we knew this happened there, this, this was budgeted for also, correct?
The, uh.
I don't know the answer to that.
The, uh, sludge box is in place.
Right.
That was a question.
Were we talking wastewater or clear water?
Okay.
This, the clear water.
No, then this is gonna be.
This will come out of the sewer.
Yeah, and this, this is gonna be some money to give.
Are we splitting this up into two different deals or are we talking about one deal for both wastewater and clear water?
The, the twelve thousand is to design both.
Right.
Okay.
We could design both and, and that's gonna be the kind of, uh, contract that a contractor will bid on and remove the problem from both locations. But I don't anticipate that being cheap.
No.
I mean, that's probably gonna be, that could, that could have five, that could have five zeros behind.
The last time it happened was just at the water treatment plant, it was a hundred thousand bucks to get rid of the sludge in those three ponds.
And we did, and we also years ago did, uh, out at the lagoons and that was, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that was removing a whole bunch of this, this is actually a different product in a different location. But we've gotta get, we, we've gotta get that away because the regulators are telling us that, that it has to be gone, so.
This little fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars was, is minor compared to if we don't do anything, we fall into full uncompliance, then it can be ten thousand dollars.
And it sounds like we're close.
Uh, we're not close yet, we're not really close, yes, but we do need to follow this. I mean, once they, a consent order is a very serious thing and you can get amendments to it if you can show that there's, that there's reasons for it, but I mean, we need to, we shouldn't ignore this, this is not a piece of business that I would ignore.
As a state, so this is expedite the accomplishment of both type tasks and that's exactly what.
So are we gonna do, the, the dates I signed here was January of eighteen, we should have a plan put together to present to the D E Q?
Well, the first date was, uh, quicker than that. The sludge disposition plan is July first, two thousand seventeen and they want it, they want it removed from the wastewater treatment plant by January two thousand eighteen. We own, we have an N O V or notice of violation at the water plant, so that one is a.
Yeah, that one.
That one's not as important and we may even divide the two and then seek additional time or other means or something of the other one, based on how the bids turn out.
But we do have to have the design.
We're gonna have to do the, the wastewater treatment plant, absolutely.
So you're asking for twelve thousand dollars for a design on this project, yes?
Yeah, actually retroactively approve the consent order and authorize, uh, the Monsoon to prepare the, or to have the mayor sign the proposal.
Consent order and the other is Monsoon proposal. So I need motion.
So you need a motion for twelve?
Yes. Retroactively approve the consent order.
Yeah.
Need a motion for that.
Okay, make a motion to retroactively approve the consent order for the wastewater treatment design.
Second.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Pager.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Then you authorize for the execute Monsoon proposal?
Notion to execute the Monsoon proposal.
Motion. Do they have a second?
A second.
Rook call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Pager.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Back to council. Out of twelve, approve Mayor Gordon J. Johnson, interim city manager David Payne, city clerk Dixie Johnson and Russ Meacham and Mayor Meacham Wilson, chief financial officer, as authorized signatories on security pledges at the financial institutions. Any discussion? Motion to approve the signers.
Second.
Rook call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Pager.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Number thirteen, receive and review proposals including canvas for a Wednesday.
Web, web.
That's not a web, that's, that looks like abbreviation for Wednesday. Uh, web-based design for the city of Perry, Perry Municipal Authority website. Selection based on proposal and consider authorized to merit to execute the contract with a successful provider. Ty Davis has some, Tyson Davis has some stuff he don't do either, you know?
Uh, we, we have, uh, I put that RFP together, you approved it at the last meeting. We had a rather quick turnaround, we got two proposals. Uh, one was, uh, one that I knew would probably do, they'd done the Blackwell website. The other one, uh, came from Oklahoma City at a, uh, much more significant cost, we provided both of those. Uh, once I looked at them, there was no reason to provide a canvas because they had, I mean, they looked fairly complete and the prices were different. But for purposes of this, we have, we have Gabriel from, uh, and he's the less expensive, uh, one. We have him, uh, here today with local Big Fish and I wanted him to show you what it could be. And I guess from the administration point of view, if you wanna have a webpage for an inexpensive price, uh, he's the guy that, that bid and is, and is probably the lowest responsible bidder. And, and when you're talking about it, I want you to talk, you know, not only the price, but the difference between five hundred and one fifty and, you know, you know, all that. So go ahead and show them what you have.
Um, yeah, so just real briefly and I will try to keep this short, um, the best way to explain what me and my team do is to compare your website to the city of Blackwell. It's our most recent project. Um, but obviously they're very easily compared, both of the websites between city of Perry and city of Blackwell. Yours guys, y'all are a little bit older than they are, um, but neither of the websites, they are optimized for all the devices that are available today for a desktop, a tablet and for an iPhone. So the first thing is just to build a website from the ground up, okay? And to make sure that the code is fresh and that it's up to date, so that no matter where you view it at, you can actually read it and the buttons work and it takes you where it needs to go, okay? Um, this is the website that we built for Blackwell. So we take time in our industry and we focus on each different platform uniquely, so we build out the desktop version and we move over and we build out the tablet version and then we move over and build out the mobile version as well. So this is just, as we build it, we provide a preview to our client, so they can see the project as it's being built. So you can see each individual item, uh, but just for tonight's purposes, I'll go through the desktop version of Blackwell. Whenever we take on a project, like for example, the department section, each city is different that I've noticed, but sometimes there's just way too much information, it's convoluted or the information is repetitive, it just repeats itself over multiple pages. So what my team does is we take all of the content, we pull it into one page and then we make sure that it's not being duplicated for what's called the S E O, which is search engine optimization. If there's too much information on a website that is repeated, it's a knock against you as an organization, according to Google and things like Bing and Yahoo. If I talk over your head, just kinda like, give me a look, I don't wanna talk too much over your head here, but basically there's a lot of data that needs to be cleaned up on websites, okay? That's what S E O is. That's the five hundred dollars a month versus the hundred and fifty dollars a month. So for five hundred dollars a month, just for the first year, my team comes in and we clean up all of your online content. Um, according to, there's a report called Yext, Y E X T. It tells you based off of your website how you rank and you guys are currently ranked at a zero, meaning you're not even listed on Google, your Facebook page isn't set up correctly, um, the information that's online is just, it's incorrect everywhere. So what our team does is we come in there and we correct all of those things for you, uh, and that's what's included for that five hundred bucks for the first year. Now, also what that does is for things like Blackwell, they wanted to do keywords. So from left to right is the order of importance for them, they wanted to focus on their residents first and then moving right, their visitors, then their services and their government. Every single thing that you see here is freshly built by us, the photography, we take so professional photography, this is a picture of a mural off the side of their building is the background with these horses. But everything that you see here is, is picked, we, we take the professional pictures of your city. So we'll come in, take pictures of your city and use those to put onto your website, so it's a fresh, up-to-date look. Residents, utilities, schools, I'm not gonna take time to go through the entire website, you guys can do that, but every single picture on it is done. I will focus on the visitor section though, cause here's where S E O comes into play. They wanted to focus heavily on, um, nearby casinos, local hotels, the top of Oklahoma museum and then also we are building a new website for the Blackwell Event Center. Now, why is this so important? It's important because this is what is drawing people outside of the city of Blackwell, their eyes to the city's website, okay? So if someone is looking for casinos, what my team is doing is we are ranking Blackwell as a result whenever you search for casinos in Oklahoma. It's actually a highly targeted term here in Oklahoma and they just happen to be positioned right in the middle of a bunch of casinos and they have hotels to offer. So we have partnered with them and they said, okay, what do you want people to know about Blackwell and we make sure that those keywords are being searched for, okay? But that, within a nutshell, I can answer any questions that you have, but it really is super simple, it's a website that we built for me from the ground up. We optimize your website, clean up all your content for you, so everything that's online is correct about you. And the five hundred dollars is only for the first year. Now, annually, on your anniversary, we give you a brand new website. One of the biggest things that I've found with a lot of my clients is, you know, you can build a brand new website, but then what happens three years from now? Well, code is outdated, a new device has come out, something has changed. As long as you are our clients, every year we will go and give you a brand new website. We update the design and make sure the code is fresh, so it's always working for you, okay?
And, and one of our big pieces, other than visitors, which is good, to our ballpark and, and our events, our Cherokee Strip Museum and the like, is the economic development, which, which we have in our contract. And we do wanna feature, uh, you know, the property that we have for sale, some of the economic development that we've done in the past and the like. So I would see, and I don't know what the label is, whether it's economic, you know, development or what, but, but that probably needs to be a big part of it. At least that's what the client has said when we, when we talked about doing this.
Sure, absolutely, uh, one of our clients is, um, B I A, Blackwell Industrial Authority and they have several pieces of property also that we feature on their website and that stuff is easily updated as well. So yeah, there'd be some portion of the website, it tabs at top. I work hand in hand with, whether it's the city clerk, whoever would be in charge of sort of managing this project and we would determine the outlay of it, including the economical development and then all of that would be featured on the website as well. Yes, sir.
So Gabriel, if I understand this right, just tell me, so to, to create the website, and it's a pretty quick turnaround too, I noticed.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Is really about two thousand dollars.
Correct.
Then you go into a monthly for the first year, five hundred dollars a month. At the end of that first year, then a new website is recreated, continues to be cleaned up, correct?
Yes, sir.
You go into year two, now you're at one fifty a month. So at the end of year two, so you, let's assume that we still have a good working relationship. A new website is created, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Do you then go under a new contract, or is it just a continuing, ongoing, one hundred and fifty dollars a month? I mean, I know things might change.
Sure.
Is, or is there a new, well, it's now, now, two years or another thousand dollars we're going to recreate, and you go into another contract, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I understand what you're saying, yeah, so the contract is as is, the contract can be, I mean, within thirty days, you can say, man, we don't like working with this team, you can terminate the contract. So it'll never go above a hundred and fifty dollars. The reason why we're able to be so cost-efficient is because we've spent the past decade building the platform that we build the websites on top of. So no, after the first year, it turns into a hundred and fifty bucks a month, and they're going on for the next decade, which I hope to have you a client for that long, you get a website.
It's a month-to-month basis after that.
It's a month-to-month basis after, it's a month-to-month basis since day one.
Yeah, true.
Where are you, little kid? Um, we're a husband-and-wife team, uh, my wife and I, we live in Blackwell, uh, but I also do have several programmers of me, and they're in the Chicagoland area. We just moved to Blackwell from Chicago about two months ago. Um, so my company was based out there, and I've been doing it for just eighteen years now.
So who, who do you use for the hosting?
Um, we have our own host, it depends on who you want to use for your, um, as far as your URL is concerned, I've seen people use GoDaddy or Bluehost, uh, but we use Amazon as our personal host, so we, we take care of all of the, that fee includes the hosting, we host all the coding website for you.
And so for that five hundred a month, that first year, you do all of the SEO stuff?
Right.
And then, but you continue to do the SEO for a hundred and fifty after that first year?
Great question, so SEO, once it's laid and the foundation is done, there is very minimal work to be done. Once you start ranking and your content is cleaned, you don't have to do anything from that point forward. So we'll still maintain it for you, but the reason why that cost is at the beginning is because there's some legwork that needs to be done. But after that, and that's why we lower the cost. And here in this area, I've just noticed, the pricing for the type of services that we offer is astronomical, um, and I'm, I'm not really quite too sure why they charge that. Because really after the first year, it's done.
Okay.
It's done, so, no, I mean, we'll still maintain the SEO for you, but once it's built.
I was just making sure, once we, once we pay that, basically it's going to be six thousand for that first year.
Right.
But that, now everything's set up, and so you'll still maintain it for one fifty.
Correct. That's exactly right, yeah. And there's two options, so the, the system that we've built, uh, the city clerk, or whoever manages it, can log in, and they can make changes directly to the website themselves. So if they wanted to, you know, like, for example, um, on the city of Blackwell page, she wants to be able to change what's called, you know, it's just a poster, but the poster fluctuates. She can log in and change the content in the picture anytime she wants to. So we give them access, it's a simple system in the background for them to log into, or we do pride ourselves on customer care. You send an email to my team, and within twenty-four hours on Monday through Friday, we'll make the change for you.
Up to whole new category department, anything like that could be.
Per change, so if you're going to give me a whole brand-new category with pictures and stuff, it's not going to happen in twenty-four hours.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
No, but yeah, but that's why, I mean, hopefully after the thirty days, you know, we've sat down and we have a good working project that is done, and so from that point forward, it's just little tweaks, you know?
Yeah, because that, I mean, one of my questions was going to be, do we have the ability to put out service alerts or something, you know, if we know?
Yeah, um, any guesses as to how many people a month visit your current website?
Very many.
I gave up a long time.
If I go there to log in to download my packet, so I have to visit at least once.
Well, so believe it or not, actually, right now, on average monthly, you're having two thousand unique visitors to your website.
Oh, really?
And, and it's four, and I've noticed this in municipalities, and it's interesting, they're going there to pay their bill. They go there to click on that pay my bill button. So what I did for Blackwell, and what they wanted to do was whenever they click on pay my bill, they're using this as a billboard. So what they've done here is, these are going to be for ads for different locations around the market, so whenever they come, they place ads there, and they can charge if they want to, whatever, but people come to this place, and it's almost like a, a fishbowl effect, so this needs to be something that really does get paid attention to, because your citizens are coming to your website every month to pay the bill, and if you take advantage of that page.
So you're selling ads to businesses in the community?
You can do what you want with them, but yeah, I mean, basically, that's what they're going to be doing.
The point is getting that though, once you get people there, it's how do you keep them there and get them to go look at other things?
Yeah, and communicate with them, so if you have something going on, you know, you want this page to be something that captures their attention, that clearly communicates.
Like our electric stuff, or when we stuff stuff in there, if we put stuff up there on the pay bill where they're going to pay, we can identify that way.
Why does, I, I question your decision-making, because why would you become a Blackweller?
Actually moved there, so my dad is a, he's a pastor of the Methodist Church there. We're, we're kind of in the middle of relocating out to the west coast, we're just in Blackwell for, you know, about a year right now, so while we're here, we're getting to know the municipalities, it's been interesting.
Welcome to Blackwell.
Thank you.
I'm originally from Blackwell, I'm sorry, but.
It's been a war for a hundred years, okay?
What's your uptime?
Uh, we have-
How many websites?
Yeah, ninety-seven percent, you know, um, we were at ninety-nine, but Amazon went down about three months ago, four months ago, and so as a result of that, we've had to shift it. So we have a ninety-seven percent guaranteed uptime, and we are hoping for that to go up, it's a good question.
How is your security with all the malware stuff that's going on?
We've never had an issue with that, yeah.
Well, I'm not a tech guy, but it sounds great to me.
We've been needing this forever.
Yeah, yeah. Everything is SSL secured, so everything that we do is, is secure online, you know, it's all HTTP certified, so.
He's as personable as anyone we've ever had to kind of talk to about anything.
It's not often you get a tech guy that can also talk like a human.
Exactly.
Just being in the business for a while. We can build a website for you and make it look really awesome, and it'll be secure, you get a new website every year.
So if you're moving to the west coast, when you redo the, the website each year, how will you go about getting pictures then?
Well, once we get pictures, it's done, so the two thousand dollars includes the photographer coming out and taking pictures. If you want to do pictures again, we can, we can discuss that, but buildings don't change a whole lot, you know, so, I don't know if we see that happening. But if we do, if you need a photographer to come out and take more pictures, of course, we would have to charge for that.
If we had something new come, look, go up in here.
Yeah.
Could we send you, we could send you?
You can send us photos, absolutely, um, and we'll send you the resolution requirements that we ask. Again, that's up to you, but we do like to, because it's, you guys are our client, we do want to maintain a certain standard of excellence, so.
We do have some pretty good photographers in town, so.
Great.
If we could, someday we wanted to send some of the things.
Yep, yeah, so we'll take care of the first photos, and then from now on forward, if you want to hire somebody local to be filming, see.
I'll make the motion, the, the, where are we at? Is that thirteen?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with Local Big Fish, uh, with the agreement of the five hundred dollar charge for the first year.
I have one more question. How'd you come up with the name?
Well, so my original clients are like restaurants, and, so I was teaching them how to become the big fish in their local market, or the SEO, so local big fish was.
Well, one more question, I thought I just thought of, uh, we mentioned having somebody here to update, would the training and all that be included for them to?
Oh, yeah, so whenever that happens, there are video tutorials that go with the backend, but it is so easy, I mean.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll verify that, it's easy.
That's the test. Do we have a second on this?
We have a church program called Big Fish, it's pretty cool.
Further comments, questions? Pro call, please.
Calder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Aherne.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is it okay if I go or do I need to continue?
You're out of here.
You can go back to Blackwell, it's okay.
So who would like contact me before?
My Lord, heaven, we still have a few more pages to go.
Probably Dixie.
Probably Dixie, yeah, we're on fire now.
Let's go.
A mass.
Who put this agenda together with five hundred?
All right.
I totally quit adding things.
God, we still have three more pages.
I think it's been a hospital check-in. Hospital check-in.
Where are we at?
We're on fourteen.
Okay.
Consider approval proposal of monsoon consultants for the, to provide technical assistance in the development of the geographic information system, that is GIS, based mapping program for the city in the amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars. This was budgeted. This is a system that some of us with the city have been, uh, talking about for a few years, to map our utilities, and to provide a map, to, uh, provide the condition, street conditions on, and, uh, to, to just keep track of things, signs, manholes.
And this is a budgeted item, it's already budgeted?
I don't think so.
We have not budgeted this.
When, when I was serving in this capacity four years ago, I, um, bought the software, so we have the, the basic AutoCAD software. We have, uh, one computer, Tyson's computer, that has adequate horsepower to run the software. It doesn't take a real special computer, we could put a video card in any of them and get by with it, but his already has that. The situation is that, um, several years ago, I contracted with the city of Perry to digitize all of our maps, and went to courthouse, made copies, paid for copies of every subdivision in town, and redrew every lot, street, manhole, and reproduced it all in AutoCAD. So we have all of our basic maps completed. That's been several years ago, there've been changes that have occurred since then. So, as you have contracted to have, uh, wire systems updated, sewer systems updated, streets changed, all that stuff, bridges built, somebody has those electronic files. You should in the future insist that one of the deliverables in those design projects is the electronic file, to bring that home here so that we have it in our possession and can look it up on our system. That's one of the maintenance things that has not ever been done. Then, as we just make changes on our own, our utility departments change things, um, we have not had a way of documenting that. So, it's kind of a two-phase deal, where the first phase is making the, the basic maps, and a lot of that, most of that work is done. But then the next step would be adding the GIS, the geographic information system. And what that amounts to is, when you hang a transformer, that data sheet goes into a database, and now when you pull up that neighborhood on the mapping system, you can click on that transformer, and it, the screen will display all the data that's attached to that item you just clicked on. So it provides a handy place to document all this stuff that, right now, isn't even being documented, or if it is, it's in some drawer somewhere, and no good way of finding it.
So in maintenance, it'd be a very, uh, time-consuming, or a time-saving.
Oh, yes, yes.
For the electric department, since you used those transformers, click on one to know exactly what they have before they go out there and have to repair it.
Exactly. And then some things that you can do on farther down the road, you can build on this system, uh, when there is an electric outage, you can pull that up and look, and this goes hand-in-hand with your, uh, remote meter reading also. You can see, here's a pattern, we've lost it here, here, and here's probably this transformer here, those kinds of things eventually get built into it. What I'm trying to accomplish now is just get the house cleaning done, where we have all the files in one place. I have the files at my house on my computer, because that was part of the contract. We were careful to write the contract at the time, so that my deliverable to the city was a copy of my work, and that way I could retain the same thing and free to do with it whatever I wanted, so I wouldn't get in trouble with having city property in my house. I've delivered what was to be delivered, but what was never carried through was the maintenance of it here. So I've tried to maintain it whenever I know about changes, but really, there was no one put in the driver's seat for maintaining all this information. We have, um, I brought a copy of everything I had here four years ago, part of that has been changed and worked on, and meanwhile, I've worked on some of it, and still no system to bring it together. Probably part of this would be storing that on cloud, or only on our server here at City Hall, and setting up access, uh, criteria on who can, who has access to it, who can view it, who can change it, those sorts of things. So what Monsoon is proposing here is that they bring a person up from Edmond on a regular basis and train a person or people here in how to set up that housekeeping and how it's all put together.
The, um, well, reading the, the contract here, it says software, hardware specifications, um, the GIS system we have currently is AutoCAD?
Yes, and what I have, what I have found in reading what's current out there right now is a lot of people are using AutoCAD for the design end of it, then they go to an ESRI software that is known as ArtView, or ArtMap, or Art this, that, that is really adapted to the database part of it, but they recommend using the ESRI software for the database and AutoCAD for the, the design. And they, they are somewhat compatible, they are sold as being compatible with each other. I'm not smart enough to make that work, but they say it'll work. So, down the road, the ArtView or ArtMap would be a requirement to get into the database part. Right now, we just really need to be maintaining our maps, and there, the software's already there, computer's already there. We just need a little guidance on the protocol in managing the files, we can work it out ourselves, uh, and maybe that's what you'd like to do, but it would be beneficial to have someone that has some history working with that to get us aimed in the right direction, so that we arrive where we want to arrive on down the road.
What department are you proposing does the maintenance of the maps?
For now, Tyson can do that.
Will this be also a way to maybe, uh, help on inventory?
Yes, it, you can just let your imagination run, any, anything you would put into a database that you might have a drawing for it, just take the furniture in the building, if, if there was a reason for inventorying that, you take your floor plan, you drop chairs around, you tie information to every chair, or computer, or printer, or whatever you want, serial number, and the date that it was installed, all of that stuff just fits right into the database, that, that's what it's for. Yeah, when you bought it, how old it is, when you're going to retire it, maintenance plans, so this would just be the front end of that. Just get you started down that road with some guidance on making sure that you wind up in a reasonable spot.
We currently have a, a map of the city showing everything that you've done up to date.
Right.
Is it in the same format as what Monsoon is proposing?
Yes.
So there's nothing that needs to be, quote-unquote, done there?
Uh, identifying the changes that have been made and starting to work on those changes.
Hmm, that's a, that's a maintenance thing that is beyond what Monsoon is proposing, is that correct?
They would probably help us in identifying those, for one thing, we have a s- complete set of files here at City Hall, I have a complete set of files at home. There has not been an effort to keep the, we did for a while, and it fell to the wayside. So, I know we have maps that have had different dates on them, and we can probably identify the last update by the date that's in the computer. So it may not be a big deal. So it may not be a big deal to find the later file and bring that into one location.
And yours is all up to date?
No, because changes were going on here that I wasn't aware of.
Yeah.
And when Bryce and I would talk about something, I'd make changes at home and give him whatever he wanted. So the the maintenance between the two got lost eventually.
In order for us to go into a full-blown GIS system where we have a guy out there with a a surveyor stick that.
We already own it. We already own it.
We already own it. Okay. Um, so we're, this is basically just pulling all this stuff together for seventy-five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah. This, no, this is the training. Some of the things he mentions here, we've already done. Software identification and stuff like that. He would probably help us look at the ESRI software and make recommendations on that. I don't think we're ready for it just yet, but we wanna make sure we're aligned with the right stuff. And I think they could guide us on that.
So when you leave and go do your thing. Yeah, whatever you do. By that time, will Tyson or whoever get the sign and be able to update and create and do whatever else?
I think so.
Keep this thing running?
And who knows, I might even hang around a little bit for that, just sort of find stuff.
We pay him so well.
Well, David, when we were doing Digiticket, I was coming to you about the GIS mapping. I'm not familiar with it, but they were really requesting that when we were trying to get Digiticket. And it doesn't have like a, what's the word, uh, GPS type functions with it as well? That's what Digiticket was really referred to. Wishing we had GIS mapping in the city.
Just as a little sales pitch, I used to go to GIS users' group meetings years ago. So I know it has changed a lot since I used to attend those. But I went to Oklahoma City and that particular night, the police department was showing how they use GIS. And they would document all of the crimes, where they were located. And you can click over here and get some details about it, whatever details were put in, put on in the system. And people would come in to the police department and say, well, we're new in town and we've got some kids. We wanna be close to a school, but we don't wanna be in a a high-crime area. Could you tell us what goes on? And they could turn that on and show, we've got these kind of crimes going on here and these over here. And here's a nice friendly area, it's close to a school. They could answer those questions real quickly and easily because all of that information was on there. And if they're going to do a drug bust, if they've ever been in that house, one of the things that the officers do is while they're going through, they sketch out a floor plan of the house. And then that is put in there. And if they ever have to come back to that house, they know where all the exits are, they know where some of the hiding places are. They look at the vents on top of the house, they know that's a bathroom, that's a kitchen because of how they've vented. Just amazing, all the stuff that they capture and put in there. And now when they want to go in that building and gang up on somebody, they've got lots of information that has to be put in one time. It's there forever. There you go, Brian.
I think I'll need about three more officers. I need to hire some sketch artists. You'll have to share those with Wayne, cause Wayne will use the same parts of the system for fire stuff.
But your. Fireplug flow rates. I made a map for for Wayne for his fireplugs. But I don't have a way of attaching that information, but I did what it could do. I made the map and showed all the fireplugs in town. And then it's his job to document that somehow. With a GIS, you document it right there. Fire hydrant, what did I say?
What's the difference, food, fireplug, and fire hydrant?
Fire, fire plugs haven't been around for a hundred and fifty years.
Well, I have.
My dog knows the difference.
Yeah, a dog knows the difference in fireplug and fire hydrant. All right. Any further discussion? We need to do what feels appropriate.
And this has not been budgeted.
So this doesn't appear to have saved us any money. It only opens the door to spend more later. What value do we think it adds to the average citizen out there? If we do this? How does it help people that live here?
For one, when there's a break in line, the the guys know where the valves are. And if they're buried under asphalt even, they, we could even know that. If we know where they were when they were installed, they come in asphalt the street, cover the valves up, we still know where they are.
What, what about?
It it helps in that area. Two, it helps Wayne know if, like you said, he did the metering on the fire hydrants. If he's got this in his system and there's a, you know, there's a line break out there somewhere, he knows that 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 fire may be compromised in that area. For the private citizen, it it speeds up services or it speeds up, hopefully, the knowledge of where we need to have a service. It's, it's not something that's gonna happen within a year, but the efficiency can come around. It really makes emergency services, repair services more efficient, more timely. From my point of view as a surveyor and engineer, my biggest issue when doing plans in a city, where are the utilities? The most valuable thing you can find in a ci- in a city is a map of their utilities. Because I spent years having to figure that out for myself, digging in Oklahoma City's vault to find out where a water line was built fifty years prior to me trying to do this set of plans. So the cost savings can be in the engineering fees and in the research fees finding where we got and when it was done. Because right now, the guy that used to know all that stuff in his head is dead. That's the point I wanted to make.
So all the information that we have lives in someone's head or on a piece of paper that we don't know where it is. And as they, as those people retire, all of your knowledge goes with them.
That's why it was so important when Mr. Henderson, Henderson called me and said, I've got a deal here where we worked on that tower out the lake. I brought all of his notes into City Hall. And if it hadn't been for them, we wouldn't know really what condition things are to send a diver down there to figure it out. So it, that stuff can be put into a GIS system and it stays there forever. And it's not in a vault somewhere where you gotta go dig it out.
Or it's not just buried in the ground that you have to go dig it up to find out what it is.
There's a term used in in engineering called pothole. Some of you heard, where we have to go out and actually dig for a utility. Is it there? And.
That's the reason we're buying that back system.
That's right.
Most cities actually require before a contractor, hit a pothole or crossing utilities.
Yep.
Well, this'll give you a better idea of where it is. Maybe not within a foot or so, but within a few, within two, three feet of where it actually is.
GPS was when you.
Exactly. Yeah.
The guy was leaning it over this way or he was leaning it over that way. But the tolerance on us, on a, on a dual antenna GPS unit, standing over a point, in 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 fifteen minutes, if you were, could stay there that long, you'd get that location within two centimeters.
We don't do metrics here. We don't do metrics here, this is America.
About two quarters of an inch, how's that?
So what we, what we're doing here, what we need to do to continue, we're doing is, is setting the groundwork for that GC, GPS, or GIS system. And if we're going to move into the twenty-first century, it's mandatory that we start spending money. The question is, is how do we spend it and then, and what's the best, biggest bang for the buck?
Actually, not even as we move into the twentieth century, we still have to move into the twenty-first.
That's very true. That is very true.
My deal is, I I'd, I'd, I'd rather us look at this program and decide either do it or decide to look at a budget process where we can look at the cost of doing a complete program within a budget year.
That was gonna be my next question is, um, what is the, what is our strategic plan for this? And how do we, and how do we fund it?
That's where we need to talk to an consultant, I mean consultant, a GIS consultant, to find out what the, what the cost would be and and they get.
He's not gonna tell you how to fund it though.
No, that, that's where we got.
We gotta set our budget up to do it. That's what.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this, the seventy-five hundred dollars is mostly for training. Because here and there, we don't like the GPS unit. I didn't know we had one. I don't even know when it was bought or why it was bought. But I heard rumors that we had one. Well, I found it. It's out of the sewer plant.
The tremble.
It's a tremble.
Which, which one?
Uh, I don't remember, but it's.
Dual antenna tremble. I forgot who bought it.
And, yeah, so we have pieces and parts of this already. We just need to sweep them together and make them talk to each other. We've got the beginning of the system.
So something, you mentioned previously, you did this and then things kinda, I think that was your, your commotion there.
I con- yeah, I contracted to digitize the maps.
Right.
Did that.
A- a- and if we do this for training, are we gonna have any kind of documentation as far as how that's gonna be maintained, making sure that we do have a role in place?
That, that's, that's the training I'm looking for, is someone that's been down that road and show us.
I'm talking from a city basis. Are we gonna have a docu-? Cause this is almost kind of like another job that we don't have today.
Yeah, that was gonna be a question, is who actually goes out and does this?
You've gotta have employee.
Locate the utilities, mark the spots, create the map, the database that's gonna have overlay on top of the AutoCAD. Somebody's gotta take those points.
We're talking about training someone, but I don't want it to fall by the wayside again, that we just spent seventy-five hundred dollars on. And we don't continue to maintain it because some other priority comes up. Where if we know this is kind of a job, then we, we can continue with a new city manager or whatever that is to push that.
You don't have to connect it to a database yet. You don't have to put the GPS information in yet. But what I think is important, that we have a system in place where the maps themselves are maintained correctly. That's the very basic thing that all piles on top of later.
That's where that started, isn't what I was talking about. This is the beginning of that. This is the base.
And you stay right there. You stay right there as long as we had a way of maintaining.
As long as nothing changes.
Yeah, just input and change the simple way. Just draw the lines. But we don't have a process in place of, of making sure that when they put in a new two-inch line or a six-inch line to replace it to.
This gets updated.
Yeah, we don't have a place to document that.
Like the stuff Wayne put together on the sanitary suit. We've got all that, but it's just not in, in digital format.
He's got it. He's got it in digital format. He can just switch over.
And I follow all of it. I, I don't know if we're understanding what I'm asking. We're, we're pushing that we spend seventy-five hundred dollars to do this and get it up to date today and have somebody trained afterwards. But we get a new city manager tomorrow, how do we know his focus is gonna keep that person working on making sure that stuff? The stuff we just spent money to maintain stays maintained. So that we don't come down the road three years from now and spend another seventy-five hundred dollars to get up to speed.
And on top of your question, who do we have that's not overloaded already that we can even train?
That's really the, where I'm coming from.
Can you take that along? I think Tyson.
You said that, I just wanna make sure that the next city manager realizes that this is something we've put some focus on.
Well, this council should set that priority.
Yeah, and and add it to our strategic plan.
Or a council like this, whatever happens in the future.
You're talking about the future, don't you?
Okay, so this is not budgeted. And so where does, what Peter do we rob to pay this poll?
Slowly, he raises his hand.
Dramatic. The drama is good.
I will have more than seventy-five hundred dollars in net income that we didn't budget in fiscal year seven, sixteen, seventeen, that we're about to finish, if you want us to do that, PMA funds.
I don't mind doing it. It's just will we keep it up?
That's where I'm.
You got to.
Well, I mean, it's gotta be a priority for us going forward because that's.
I can remember twelve, fifteen years ago, when they were doing the street up in the neighborhood where I was at. And they were talking about, we have no idea where the, where the water line's even at. And then the water line, they put a new street in, six months later, the water line breaks. And there's water coming up in the street.
I remember that.
And in my yard. And they're like, where do we start digging? So they're out there just whacking holes in this new street, brand-new street, like two months old.
And anytime that you.
I see the importance.
Anytime you have a contractor come in, it's a requirement in the contract that you provide us with a GIS layout auto.
We can put that in specification.
I think it's very important. I just don't know who's gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll welcome to talk. I agree with you.
You know, everybody used to require as-built plans, city, state, counties.
Shouldn't the engineer do it?
Yep.
Yeah, but we still have to integrate it into our database.
That's why I'd like the engineer get onto our database and do it. I wouldn't.
I mean, they send you, they send you the, the record and you have to install it into your database.
Well, I mean, he works hourly, you know, he's your city engineer. I don't know about some place, that would be the logical person to do it, I would think.
For him guiding somebody.
Yeah, but an hourly rate of what? Could consume that seventy-five hundred dollars really quick.
Do we need to do a more, a more in-depth study of this and let's table it till next time?
Well, here's, here's the way I look at it. We, we either do it now or we make it a priority with the new guy. If we do it now, it's easier to make the priority with the new guy. We have this in place, we want it done, you know? I just don't know who's gonna do it. That's my biggest hang-up. Who do we have that has time to do it?
I'd like to table it tonight. Till we get the new guy in, like Bill said, might get a priority of it. Because we can't sit on our hands and let something else fall by the wayside and we don't have people to do it. And it'll fall by the wayside, so.
But we also have been, if we're gonna do that, we need to look at it as far as putting it into the budget for next year to make sure that it's there. It's gotta be an item that we put in. We can't just say, oh, well, we're gonna just do it, we're gonna let the next guy take it. We gotta figure out a way to make sure that it happens.
Without getting into the piggyback.
That's right.
It's real possible that we have to budget a person to do this.
That's exactly right.
So would it be fair to, to ask you to go find out some of those other dollars as well for us to, to budget on with, uh, the, the software and the database and anything else we can?
Sure, I could look at that.
If you don't mind.
No.
Then we'd have a, a, and, and, and a plan as to how we might get there.
Cause I, I, I won't pretend to be up to date on this because, like you said, it's been a few years since I was more involved in it. And sure, the picture has changed. But as I see it right now, the only thing you'd need to add would be the ArtView software. I think that's on the order of four thousand dollars. Then answer the question, who, how much time are you going to devote maintaining it and who's going to do that?
Sure. And where are you gonna get the input?
Well, that too. And in that.
Well, I think it's easier to maintain than it is to develop, in my mind.
Oh, for sure.
But you can grow it as far as you wanna go or keep it as minimal as you wanna keep it. Right now, we have the minimal part. It's just the line drawings. But you can grow it as far as you wanna go or keep it as minimal as you wanna keep it, right now we have the minimal part, it's just the line drawings, the maps. If we just stayed there, that's something, because we use it frequently, now that I'm here, I have it on my computer and I turn around to my computer frequently, pull up a map to answer a question. What, what is the, uh, utility easement, where is the utility easement in this neighborhood, how white is it? Uh, things like that, we have the information, but no one's trained to use it. And when it really is important question to be answered, someone has been calling me and I'll print it out and bring it down to City Hall. I'd like to get out of business.
So if, if we tabled it and then we asked you to come forward with a, with a, a plan of action as to how we might be able to take what we have and grow it, is that a reasonable request?
I will try to answer that, yeah, see what I can do to answer that.
So I'd like to make a motion and be tabled this for later discussion and charge our city manager, uh, temporary guy.
Yeah.
To, uh, come back with a plan that we all can understand, even Bill. As to how do we go from where we are today to the next phase to get it started.
Have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Go call please.
Koller.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Hanger.
Yes.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Thank you. Item fifteen, consider approval of professional agreement for auditing services with CBEW, Professional Group LLP for the estimated amount of not to exceed fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. You'll recall LLP has been our, uh, professional auditor yearly for a long time now, and this is to continue the contract, the contract has not increased over the last year's budget.
And we're still happy with them obviously there?
I remember one time we changed auditors, and it was brought up that it's a good idea to change over now then.
I think this is their sixth year that, that they will have done the audit, uh, I think we had Daryl for four, wherever we started out, and the end of his fourth. Um, so this will be six years with them, you know, that, honestly, if we, if we wanna change and that's the route we wanna go, and it's just that we you gotta say that now and I'll make that decision, you know, we'll put that RSG out in January, February next year. Maybe try to do it out at this point, it's a little too late to get, um, to get the best responses on, of the audit.
No, I, I don't have a problem, I just remember that that was a discussion we had six years ago, and I'm really impressed that I remember that.
I have to, motion to approve professional agreement.
Second.
Go call next.
Koller.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Hanger.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson. We still got a form.
Now, are you ready just to take Miles over now?
Yeah.
Moral, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you, just did.
No, he said yes, he wanted to vote.
That's what I said.
Hope you know what she just voted on.
Well, I hope it was on the, uh, auditing service.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Item sixteen, discuss and give direction on rental of a billboard at I thirty-five advertising Perry commercial industrial properties for sale. Bill's checked into this and, and, uh, you see the cost that it's gonna cost us, Bill, would you like to say more about?
Uh, yeah, there's four billboards north of the Macarena, uh, this is the southbound billboard, it's the second one from the north. It now has the Comfort Inn sign on it, which is coming down. And they normally do lease this for, uh, actually, I think it's three twenty-five, isn't it Bryce?
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay, we put three fifty in here because I couldn't remember what she told me. Uh, but the lease is actually three twenty-five, they actually leased that for like four fifty. So, uh, she says she wanted to help the city a little bit, so I really appreciate that. Uh, the cost of the vinyl was about seven hundred dollars. Uh, she has a guy that makes them and we can hire whoever we want to make it, I guess, but, and she also has a guy that, which isn't quoted here, it costs about six hundred bucks to put it up. So, uh, she was really excited to help us, I travel up and down I thirty-five, not too much south, mainly north, and there are no signs to lease, I mean, they're all full. And, uh, I actually, uh, Eminem Charley had a sign farther north. Uh, I called, uh, Tracy Sherman about that sign, and it's kinda funny how if, if, uh, your sign is within so many feet of another sign, you can only advertise the business that's on that piece of property. So when they had cattle on there, they could advertise the Eminem Charley business. But now that there's no cattle left, uh, malt or Eminem or, or Charles Machine Works or Ditch Witch or whoever it is owns the sign, they can't even use it. So that sign will have to come down. I actually wanted one just a little bit farther north from the exit, and there, there are none. So we did talk about this, you know, putting up some signs, uh, it's about it really, uh, it has a, a statement down there, I think what Bryson discussed that they would put on it. I guess we could get someone to kinda design it, I think the guy that probably makes the signs probably designs things. I don't know anything about that, but.
Did I read right that it is a five-year lease?
Well, we could, we could, the, the, the original sample lease is, but, you know, I'm sure that's something.
As long as you pay her, it's gonna be yours.
Sure you could do it month to month and.
Well, I'm not saying just month to month, it just seemed like to me five years is an awful long time to clock in. I think it's a great idea.
Well, if you don't like month, or you don't like a five-year lease, I'm just telling you, don't pay it, she'll take you down.
Quick.
So it's a, it's seven hundred months, seven hundred dollars for the vinyl, and then six hundred to.
I think it's about six or seven hundred to put it up, I can't remember exactly.
And then three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five a month, and it is a lit sign.
Well, if you look at item four there, Bill, this is kinda interesting to me, because how many signs do you see that get torn down from wind and all of that? It says here, any replacement or changes on the sign at the cost to the eighty-niner for the replacement, am I reading that correctly? So there's a wind, so we pay seven hundred dollars. And there's a windstorm tears it down, they're gonna do another one for us, am I reading that right?
Oh.
That's the way I read it.
That's the way I read it.
I mean, that's a good deal, uh, if that's.
Going to item sixteen.
Cause then you gotta pay six hundred to have somebody put it back, so basically you'd be looking at about thirteen hundred, right?
Seven, six.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it blew down, we put something up, three months later it blows down, are we responsible for that, or are they gonna cover that cost? That'd be one of my questions.
Good, good clarification to get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you know, you see them all the time.
What's that item number that you're looking at?
I'm looking at.
It's number four.
It's like a subpart of four down below there.
Obligation of leasing.
Yeah, I just, I look, I remember that under five, gee, that's not keep.
I'm wondering if that would mean like if it came loose or something, I don't know.
Maybe just clarification.
Yeah.
Cause I, you know, you go down I thirty-five, you know, for a windstorm, you see stuff blowing all over the board.
Here's what that, they're saying, they'll get it replaced, but it, and it will be at their cost, that may be kind of like a wholesale price. It'd be signed at the cost to eighty-niner for replacement, so whatever it cost her.
Without doubt, it's tar advantage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The way I read it, whatever it cost her to replace it is what it cost us. That's the way I see it.
Well, I think this has been something that.
Well, we need, we can clarify.
All of us have been interested in, so.
Need a clarification on item four, at least it's not the other.
Unless we appropriate all the money upfront, uh, which we'd have to do for a five-year agreement, I mean, we could put this over in the Perry Municipal Authority side. And, uh, i- i- if we're gonna do, if we're worried about the amount going up and we wanted to enter into a longer-term agreement, or Russ, you would have to appropriate, the council would have to appropriate, but you'd have to, you'd have to recommend the appropriation of the.
Well, I mean, if we were gonna do that, we do have about, um, we're still saving about ninety thousand dollars excess hotel, motel tax funds that I can't appropriate within the current budget, so, I mean, it'd be twenty thousand dollars, it's what it'd be. I mean, I can, I can appropriate out of carryover hotel, motel funds, that part of the front balance.
Uh, the other way we could do it is we give ourselves, we could give ourselves four years of options. You know, start this July first, just like we do the, uh, just like we do the trash contract, just give ourselves uh, uh, four extra years of options at the same price, and that would just. So, it, that's actually under this item, under the city, that's what I'd recommend that you, that i- i- if you wanted to do that, that we amend this to provide for, uh, one year, July first, two thousand seventeen, to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and then four, uh, four one-year options exercised by us for the same price. Yeah.
Not to, not to waste more time, but wouldn't this be more by PMA deal than, than the city?
No, I, I think it would be either, it's just when you consider multi-year, multi-year, uh, multi-year contracts, you think, you know, you, those, you probably need to put those over in the PMA, but if I, but if we did this, uh, option of giving ourselves the option, then that, that, that clearly would work under the city if you wanted to do it.
Okay, we can, we can talk to her and see what she has to say.
I don't think, it, it doesn't make any difference, all it does is give us an option.
Yeah.
If, if, if she agreed to this, she ought to agree to.
Yeah.
There just might be an early termination, you know?
I, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, that, uh, not to take her side, but she did give us a, a price break, a small price break. And I'm telling you, there's not any signs on I thirty-five that we had, you wanna put up a sign.
There's not one from the south coming north at all.
So.
We have a motion.
You know, what is the cost, you know, we own all that property, I don't know what the cost of it is, and as long as it's properly zoned, we can put up a billboard within, within the cor- within the corporate limits, if we own the property or have a lease on the property.
They'll not put up a sign out there.
But it would be.
Probably a violation.
You know, it'd be in the park, in there.
Jim was there too.
Whether you wanted.
Yeah, and Jim, Jim hit it.
You may not wanna be associated with this Jim when we get done.
All this long, you're related, and I get no recognition.
We broke the lady, we're Johnson's law.
So are you, are you saying that we need to put up a billboard on that property?
Saying you could, I'm just saying you could, you could put a billboard up on properties, that's commercial property, you could erect your own billboard on your own property. And you could do it, I'm, I'm just giving you an option, you could do it in the commercial park south where the property is not, uh, uh, all that usable, you know, where, where it goes down. Uh, now, it's probably better to have it up at a, at a, uh, uh, up, up at the peak, but we now, you know, we own the Regency Inn.
Maybe we could buy one from Charles Machine Works that they can't use anymore.
You don't have any business on that property.
Yes, we do.
No, not where the sign is.
No, not where the sign is.
I'm saying buy the sign and move it to our property.
Oh.
I don't think it works that way.
Well, it may, I don't know, I don't know the permitting issue, surely there's some kind of permit thing you have to, sure you just can't put up a sign, can you Bryce, is that what you're saying?
Well, within corporate limits, I mean, what they do, you still have to go through permitting, what they look at, cause you can't put them anywhere unless it's in city limits and you have zoning and it's permitted in that zoning district. Then, then you, then you can, you still have to apply to, uh, Department of Transportation and all that, but you can get it permitted.
I would think if we put something on the south industrial park, we need one of them forty-foot tall signs.
Well, if, if you put one.
Cause it's right on the south side of an overpass, you know?
If you, if you put one right there at the corner, at the overpass.
But we don't own that property.
But we own a portion of it, do we not, no?
No, logic.
We own down in the creek. Well, we own just south.
We own just south of, of, of Holiday Inn Express, and we own behind Holiday Inn Express.
No, I'm talking about its center's corner.
I'm talking about, let's just take care of the one Bill's talking about, then we can worry about those other.
Uh, we own six hundred feet, we own the other side of the road, uh, six hundred feet to the, uh, south of, of the highway. So my, my, my point is, is that if we did put a sign right there, you can see it both north and south. If it's sold enough, and at that point in time, after we sell it to whomever wants it, maybe they take that over as their sign. Looking at future use of the sign after the property is sold, or the city continues to use it for other, other purposes. But you have an opportunity that.
I'm thinking for fifteen hundred bucks we'd put this sign up. Because I don't know what it costs to erect a sign, but it's gotta be expensive.
It's gotta be, put it in the ground and get the power to it and all that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask my son, Bill's is what I heard.
Twenty thousand.
He bills them for McDonald's, so I'll ask him what it's gonna cost.
Probably for best bet.
He paid me for it, I was just to say that went.
And just let it go with them.
I mean, you know, one big part of the expense is the lease to the landowner, and we own a lot of land, so I just throw that out there, I hadn't thought about it.
We have a motion.
I would, I would assume, I would assume that the wording here that is recommend, or not necessarily recommended, but just an example would be up for discussion after this, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think like an exit or a few other things might be helpful for location.
Right.
Yep.
Make a motion, we, uh, enter into a rental agreement on a billboard on I thirty-five to advertise the commercial industrial property.
Second. Any further discussion?
Now, can, can we do that with the, uh, with the options, or are we gonna appropriate all the money if we're entering into this agreement?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, because what if it works? What if we sell all our stuff and we still have to pay five years of?
Just, I'm telling you, quit paying the lease and she'll take the sign down.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna put options in it.
Yeah, I, I think we need to put options in it.
So you need, you need the motion modified to do that, though?
Maybe.
To include options.
To include options on term of lease?
Yeah, annual options.
Yeah, that's what I meant, annual options.
We know a annual.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay.
If the leasing will agree.
Right.
Lisa Rager.
She made me watch the mail, she would answer the phone.
Koller.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Hanger.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
See, uh, Johnson.
Yes. All right, lost, I've lost.
We're all getting time.
We're on seventeen now, I've run out of ink. We're going to.
Seventeen.
Consider implementation of a new retail business, existing retail business, performance and says for the city of Perry. This is our esteemed attorney's, uh, request to be put on here, so I'm gonna let him explain it, I think we've tried this before, but we do need some paperwork to do this.
Yeah, uh, these are just some forms, I got them from somewhere else, I kinda reworked them for us. You know, we didn't have any forms, if somebody comes in here and wants to make a, uh, proposal to expand a business or, uh, expand an existing business to bring a new business in, we didn't have anything to hand them to fill out, to return, which gave us the type of information that we could do due diligence with. And I had these in another community, kinda converted them here, uh, it's just an information-seeking form, we're hoping for this development, but this would actually be kind of a, uh, professional look, uh, to give to someone that may be interested in our community. And there's really no action, uh, required, uh, we actually used it today, didn't we Russ?
Yes.
Yes.
With any incentives that would, would be requested or couldn't be promised without incentive, county.
It of course doesn't det- it doesn't detail the incentives, but, you know, I mean, we have, uh, we have incentives that we can give. But, you know, I mean, we have, uh, we have incentives that we can give. We can give property, we can sell property cheap, we can, uh, we can do sales tax rebates, we can, you know, talk about, you know, a, 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 a lot of different things. Those are the major ones that we can talk about.
But this is the preliminary information here that you want from-
This is the solicit information if somebody's interested.
So you said you used it today?
Yes.
And what was the response of the recipient?
Gonna fill it in, gonna fill it out and give it back to us.
We're all happy as clams.
If you're using it, then what do you, yeah, then what do we-
Why do we even need to be talking about this, Russ?
Well, I didn't know that that would happen.
But we just got informed.
Well, I didn't know, well, I didn't know it happened, but-
It had a lot of information that we needed. It said draft on it. It, it was not a final version of the form. It said draft.
We needed, we needed the, we needed the-
It had a lot of information we needed, and so we said, hey, I've got a form here, let me get this-
Test, a test run, right?
And he gave it a test run, handed it out, she said, okay.
Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, let's get it.
So, so you're gonna report back to us next, then, as to how well it was received, and how good she filled it out, all that, is that?
Yes, she's-
Yeah, there's really no action, we just, okay.
All right, we're moving on to item eighteen. Consider approval of an invoice from M K E C for Perry general engineering related to the Ivanhoe bid documents and specifications on Eighth Street, and the amount is ten thousand and sixteen dollars fifty-nine cents. That's the bill for doing the engineering.
Oh, they're approved.
Second, motion of the second. Roll call please.
Kolder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item nineteen. Per, consider purchase two thousand fourteen ditch witch F X fifty vac system, vac boom assembly and trailer for sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars from Ditch Witch of Oklahoma Vacuum System. Waive the application for competitive bidding ordinance by a vote two-thirds, vote of the city council present at the time of the vote. If y'all read this, uh, Bill talked about it earlier, guys want a vacuum machine to help, uh, clean up, clean out, and pothole.
And Bill, I did check on the trailer situation. And went and looked at a trailer. They are purpose-built, it's a special trailer, so that the vac unit mounts right over the axles, and it dumps properly. However, they said if we brought them another trailer that could be adapted for about two thousand dollars, they would mount it on our other trailer. But it is a very specialized trailer.
We asked, I think we asked this earlier, this is, this has been budgeted, is that correct?
Yeah, this is already in the budget.
And we do have sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars without the trailer or with the trailer?
That is the-
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole enchilada. No other cost. Has somebody gone down and actually looked at this piece of equipment and kicked the tires?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Has someone gone down and looked at it?
I drove one out the sewer plant.
You drove out the sewer plant, look at it?
I had a look at that other piece of equipment out there, too.
We, we looked at the similar one. This one has, uh, I think he said about five hours on it.
Fifty, it says.
Fifty.
Oh, fifty.
Say there, you're on mine.
Well, I did that to you. Danny Shade sells all kinds of equipment. He has his lot out here east of town, or west of town. And he found one, a smaller unit than this, two of them, matter of fact, in California. One of them was thirty-nine thousand, one of them was forty-five thousand. But, but it's, it's a little bit smaller than this. Tank-wise, I think they're, these are eight hundred gallon tank, and that one was three hundred gallon tank.
Yeah, the other one is a twenty-four horse, and this one's a forty-nine, so it's-
The one that's thirty-nine thousand, uh, I don't remember exactly how many hours it had on it, but it has a sixty-horse motor on it. But, uh, it is what, we have to go to California and get it, though, you know? And we can't see it, and-
Right.
So. I, my, my only question was the trailer situation.
Burden hand.
It's a lot of money for a trailer.
Yeah.
Well, I will say this, the trailers are, are, are designed specifically for this application. And so there's a lot that goes into that.
Well, if you go buy a five thousand dollar trailer, and spend two thousand dollars retrofitting it, and you're still the same money about, you know, so-
And then it's not guaranteed to work either. You have all kinds of issues with binding and stuff when you try to dump it.
Well, if they retrofit it, it better work, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I probably won't. This has been my experience with it, I mean, that's what I do for a living, so. Take any appropriate? No, well, yeah, kind, yes, all kinds of things, but vac's one of them. In fact, this probably has one of our controllers on it.
So do something, let's move on.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of the two thousand fourteen ditch witch vac system.
And waive, uh, competitive bidding.
And waive the competitive bidding by a vote of two-thirds.
Got a second?
Motion of the second, roll call please.
Kolder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yeah. Item twenty. Declare all records contained in Perry Carnegie Library relating to genealogy, including books, materials, microfilm form, and a case that holds the microfilm and form as surplus property and authorized transfer to the Cherokee Strip Museum for use by the public in that facility.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Kolder.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes. Item twenty-one, new business. Any new business need to be brought before the council is seeking? Any new business? Seeing none, we need to consider convening into executive session with the purpose of the following. One, conferring on a matter pertaining to an economic development of the city of Perry to discuss economic development proposals for certain nursing homes, including a local nursing home, as related to the upper payment limit and the reason. Resilient funding monies that can, among other issues, be used to support the city's municipal hospital trust authority and other, and such local and other nursing homes, which proposal would create and retain jobs, payrolls, and increase and/or continue tax collections in the city and its various, and its surrounding environments, as public disclosure would interfere with the development and implementation of the proposal